Good evening. Adequate notice of this meeting has been given in accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act. Pursuant to the public laws of 1975, said notice was advertised in the Asbury Park Press and The Beacon and was posted on the bulletin board showing the time and place of the meeting. Please rise for the salute to the flag in a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First reading of ordinance 2024-11, amending an ordinance of fixing and determining salary, wages, compensation for special law enforcement officers.
Ordinance of the Township of Lacey, County of Ocean, State of New Jersey, amending an ordinance entitled "An Ordinance of the Township of Lacey, County of Ocean, State of New Jersey, affixing and determining the salaries, wages, and compensation of officers, employees, and members of the governing body of the township." This is for our Class 1, 2, and 3 officers.
Move it.
Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Curatola?
Yes.
Mayor Juliana?
Yes.
First reading of ordinance 2024-12, amending an ordinance of fixing and determining salary, wages, and compensation for the municipal alliance coordinator.
Ordinance of the Township of Lacey, County of Ocean, State of New Jersey, amending an ordinance entitled "An Ordinance of the Township of Lacey, County of Ocean, State of New Jersey, affixing and determining the salaries, wages, and compensation of the officers, employees, and members of the governing body of the township." This is for our municipal alliance coordinator.
Move it. Second.
Deputy Mayor Curatola?
Yes.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mayor Juliana?
Yes.
First reading of ordinance 2024-13, amending an ordinance of fixing and determining salary, wages, and compensation for seasonal employees.
Ordinance of the Township of Lacey, County of Ocean, State of New Jersey, amending an ordinance entitled "An Ordinance of the Township of Lacey, County of Ocean, State of New Jersey, affixing and determining the salaries, wages, and compensation of the officers, employees, and members of the governing body of the township." This is for seasonal recreation employees and our seasonal employees in DPW. I should mention that for these salary ordinances, they're all to adjust for that increase in minimum wage.
Move it.
Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Curatola?
Yes.
Mayor Juliana?
Yes.
First reading of ordinance 2024-14, amending Chapter 159 entitled "Construction Codes."
Ordinance of the Township of Lacey, County of Ocean, State of New Jersey, amending and supplementing Chapter 159 entitled "Construction Codes," Section 4 entitled "Adoption of Fee Schedule," to increase the construction department fees effective July 1st, 2024.
Move it. Oh, first reading, that move to the public?
No, first reading.
Oh, move it.
Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Curatola?
Yes.
Mayor Juliana?
Yes.
First reading of ordinance 2024-15, amending Chapter 292 so as to be in compliance with the regulations of the New Jersey Pine Lands Commission.
An ordinance of the Township of Lacey, County of Ocean, State of New Jersey, amending and supplementing Chapter 292 of the Township Code entitled "Stormwater Regulations for Pine Lands Areas," so as to be in compliance with the regulations from the New Jersey Pine Lands Commission.
Move it.
Second.
Deputy Mayor Curatola?
Yes.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mayor Juliana?
Yes.
First reading of ordinance 2024-16, amending Chapter 335 so as to be in compliance with the regulations of the New Jersey Pine Lands Commission.
An ordinance of the Township of Lacey, County of Ocean, State of New Jersey, amending and supplementing Chapter 335 of the Township Code entitled "Zoning," so as to be in compliance with regulations from the New Jersey Pine Lands Commission.
Move it.
Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Curatola?
Yes.
Mayor Juliana?
Yes.
Resolution 2024-143, accepting the sole bid for the purchase of Block 284, Lot 1... Mine...
Point 10.
110?
1.01.
1.10, okay.
Resolution of the Township of Lacey, County of Ocean, State of New Jersey, accepting the sole bid submitted for the purchase of Block 284, Lot 1.01 pursuant to Resolution 2024-118.
Move it.
Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Curatola?
Yes.
Mayor Juliana?
Yes.
Resolution 2024-144, authorizing the appointment of seasonal employees.
Resolution of the Township of Lacey, County of Ocean, State of New Jersey, authorizing the employment of seasonal employees for the Department of Public Works.
Move it.
Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Curatola?
Abstain.
Mayor Juliana?
Yes.
Resolution 2024-145, awarding a contract for document imaging services.
Resolution of the Township of Lacey, County of Ocean, State of New Jersey, awarding a contract for document imaging services to Alternative Micrographics.
Move it.
Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Curatola?
Yes.
Mayor Juliana?
Yes.
Resolution 2024-146, awarding a contract for Sunrise Boulevard East and Bob Court Lane Road Improvement Projects.
Resolution of the Township of Lacey, County of Ocean, State of New Jersey, awarding a contract to Swift &amp; Sun for the Sunrise Boulevard East and Bob Court Lane Road Improvement Project.
Move it.
Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Curatola?
Yes.
Mayor Juliana?
Yes.
Resolution 2024-147, awarding a contract for Cranberry Hill Phase 1 Road Improvement Project.
Resolution of the Township of Lacey, County of Ocean, State of New Jersey, awarding a contract to Swift &amp; Sun for the 2024 New Jersey DOT Municipal Aid Grant for the Cranberry Hill Phase 1 Road Improvement Project.
Move it.
Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Curatola?
Yes.
Mayor Juliana?
Yes.
Resolution 2024-148, awarding a contract for the purchase of police utility vehicles for road patrol.
Resolution of the Township of Lacey, County of Ocean, State of New Jersey, awarding a contract for four 2025 Ford utility interceptor vehicles to Winter Ford of Cherry Hill.
Move it.
Second.
Deputy Mayor Curatola?
Yes.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mayor Juliana?
Yes.
Resolution 2024-149, awarding a contract for the purchase of police vehicles for the Detective Bureau.
Resolution of the Township of Lacey, County of Ocean, State of New Jersey, awarding a contract for multiple vehicles to Hertrich Fleet Service for the Detective Bureau for the Township of Lacey Police Department.
Move it.
Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Curatola?
Yes.
Mayor Juliana?
Yes.
Resolution 2024-150, awarding a contract for the upfitting of police vehicles.
Resolution of the Township of Lacey, County of Ocean, State of New Jersey, awarding a contract to Elite Vehicle Solutions for vehicle equipment for multiple police vehicles.
Move it.
Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Curatola?
Yes.
Mayor Juliana?
Yes.
Resolution 2024-151, awarding a contract for the purchase of radio communication equipment.
Move it. Sorry.
That's all right. Resolution of the Township of Lacey, County of Ocean, State of New Jersey, awarding a contract to Motorola Solutions in care of wireless communications and electronics for the purchase of radio communication equipment.
Move it.
Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mr. Dykoff?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Curatola?
Yes.
Mayor Juliana?
Yes.
Resolution 2024-152, awarding a contract for the purchase of e-ticket printers and readers for the police vehicles.
Resolution of the Township of Lacey, County of Ocean, State of New Jersey, awarding a contract to Motorola Solutions in care of wireless communications and electronics for the purchase of e-ticket printers and readers for the new police vehicles.
Move it.
Deputy Mayor Curatola?
Yes.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mr. Dykoff?
Yes.
Mayor Juliana?
Yes.
Resolution 2024-153, awarding a contract for the purchase of antenna radar systems for the police vehicles.
Resolution of the Township of Lacey, County of Ocean, State of New Jersey, awarding a contract to Stalker Radar in care of Applied Concepts for four DSR-1 antenna radar systems.
Move it.
Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mr. Dykoff?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Curatola?
Yes.
Mayor Juliana?
Yes.
Resolution 2024-154, awarding a contract for the purchase of computer equipment for the police department.
Resolution of the Township of Lacey, County of Ocean, State of New Jersey, awarding a contract to Dell Technologies for computer equipment for the police department.
Move it.
Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mr. Dykoff?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Curatola?
Yes.
Mayor Juliana?
Yes.
Resolution 2024-155, awarding a contract for the purchase of a radar speed trailer.
Resolution of the Township of Lacey, County of Ocean, State of New Jersey, awarding a contract for the purchase of a Radar Speed Alert 18 ATS-5 trailer for the Lacey Township Police Department to All Traffic Solutions.
Move it.
Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Curatola?
Yes.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mr. Dykoff?
Yes.
Mayor Juliana?
Yes.
Resolution 2024-156, awarding a contract for vehicle wrapping services for the police department.
Resolution of the Township of Lacey, County of Ocean, State of New Jersey, awarding a contract to Air Graphics for vehicle wrapping services for the police department.
Move it.
Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mr. Dykoff?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Curatola?
Yes.
Mayor Juliana?
Yes.
Resolution 2024-157, awarding a contract for the purchase of vehicles for the Department of Public Works.
Resolution of the Township of Lacey, County of Ocean, State of New Jersey, awarding a contract to Winter Ford for one 2024 or newer Ford F-250 Supercab 4x4 LT pickup and one 2024 or newer Ford F-550 4x4 Regular cab.
Move it.
Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mr. Dykoff?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Curatola?
Yes.
Mayor Juliana?
Yes.
Resolution 2024-158, awarding a contract for the purchase of a vehicle for code enforcement.
Resolution of the Township of Lacey, County of Ocean, State of New Jersey, awarding a contract for the purchase of one 2024 Ford Ranger 4x4 Crew Cab Pickup to All American Ford for the Code Enforcement Department.
Move it.
Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mr. Dykoff?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Curatola?
Yes.
Mayor Juliana?
Yes.
Resolution 2024-159, awarding a contract for the purchase of an enclosed trailer for the Department of Public Works.
Resolution of the Township of Lacey, County of Ocean, State of New Jersey, awarding a contract to offshore trailers for the purchase of a Wells Cargo Enclosed Trailer for the Department of Public Works.
Move it.
Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mr. Dykoff?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Curatola?
Yes.
Mayor Juliana?
Yes.
Resolution 2024-160, awarding a contract for the purchase of a side bucket for the Department of Public Works.
Resolution of the Township of Lacey, County of Ocean, State of New Jersey, awarding a contract to Jesco for the purchase of a side bucket for the John Deere Backhoe for the Department of Public Works.
Move it.
Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mr. Dykoff?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Curatola?
Yes.
Mayor Juliana?
Yes.
Resolution 2024-161, awarding a contract for roofing services for 102 Station Drive.
Resolution of the Township of Lacey, County of Ocean, State of New Jersey, awarding a contract to LR Watson &amp; Son Roofing &amp; Construction for roof renovations for the Lacey Township Food Bank Building at 102 Station Drive.
Move it.
Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mr. Dykoff?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Curatola?
Yes.
Mayor Juliana?
Yes.
Resolution 2024-162, awarding a contract for the purchase of auto parts for the Department of Public Works.
Resolution of the Township of Lacey, County of Ocean, State of New Jersey, awarding a contract for the purchase of a NAPA AC machine to Parts Shack NAPA for the Department of Public Works.
Move it.
Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mr. Dykoff?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Curatola?
Yes.
Mayor Juliana?
Yes.
Resolution 2024-163, awarding a contract for the purchase of replacement pieces for the Whibbitt Inflatable Water Park.
Resolution of the Township of Lacey, County of Ocean, State of New Jersey, awarding a contract to Commercial Recreation Specialists for the purchase of replacement pieces for the inflatable water sports park for the Township of Lacey.
Yeah, move it.
Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Curatola?
Yes.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mr. Dykoff?
Yes.
Mayor Juliana?
Yes.
Resolution 2024-164, awarding a contract for the purpose, excuse me, purchase of mobility mats for the Whibbitt Inflatable Water Park.
Resolution of the Township of Lacey, County of Ocean, State of New Jersey, awarding a contract to DeChamps Matt System... Systems for the purchase of mobility mats for the Recreation Department for the Township of Lacey.
Move it.
Second.
Deputy Mayor Curatola?
Yes.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Dykoff?
Yes.
Mayor Juliana?
Yes.
Resolution 2024-165, authorizing the release of performance guarantee for the road opening permit 4904.
Resolution of the Township of Lacey, County of Ocean, State of New Jersey, authorizing the release of a site improvement performance guarantee posted by J. Fletcher Kramer &amp; Son for road opening permit number 4904.
Move it.
Second.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Curatola?
Yes.
Mr. Dykoff?
Yes.
Mayor Juliana?
Yes.
Resolution 2024-166, authorizing the cancellation of taxes due for a property acquired by the township.
Resolution of the Township of Lacey, County of Ocean, State of New Jersey, authorizing the tax collector to cancel taxes due for properties acquired by the Lacey Township.
Move it.
Second.
Deputy Mayor Curatola?
Yes.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Dykoff?
Yes.
Mayor Juliana?
Yes.
Resolution 2024-167, authorizing the refund of deposit monies.
Resolution of the Township of Lacey, County of Ocean, State of New Jersey, authorizing the refund of deposits held for the use of municipal facilities.
Move it.
Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mr. Dykoff?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Curatola?
Yes.
Mayor Juliana?
Yes.
Resolution 2024-168, authorizing the payment of township bills.
Resolution of the Township of Lacey, County of Ocean, State of New Jersey, authorizing the payment of township bills. This is in the amount of $3,265,553.36.
Move it.
Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes, and abstain on T-0035.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mr. Dykoff?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Curatola?
Yes.
Mayor Juliana?
Yes.
Motion to approve caucus minute meetings from May 9th, 2024.
Move it.
Second.
All in favor?
Abstain.
Aye.
Okay. Motion to approve township minute meetings from May 9th, 2024.
Move it.
Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mr. Dykoff?
Abstain.
Deputy Mayor Curatola?
Yes.
Mayor Juliana?
Yes.
Motion to approve executive session meet... Minute meetings from May 9th, 2024.
Move it.
Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mr. Dykoff?
Abstain.
Deputy Mayor Curatola?
Yes.
Mayor Juliana?
Yes.
Motion to approve an auxiliary membership for the Lenoka Harbor Volunteer Fire Company for Francis Chilsperra? Just... Just... I'm sorry, I don't mean to rip the name apart.
Gindel Sparker?
Gindel Sparker.
Okay. There I said it.
Uh, move it.
She did. Suck it.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Dykoff?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Curatola?
Yes.
Mayor Juliana?
Yes.
Have an add-on?
You have an add-on?
Yes. Resolution 2024-170, resolution of the Township of Lacey, County of Ocean, State of New Jersey, authorizing the tax collector to prepare and mail estimated tax bills in accordance with public law 1994-72.
Move it.
Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mr. Dykoff?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Curatola?
Yes.
Mayor Juliana?
And the need for the estimated tax bill is because the state has not certified the rate yet, because the school has not adopted their budget yet, so at this point we're... We just are getting things in place in case we have to do estimated bills, which it'll look like we will do that, because we won't have the rate struck by this county and the state before the end of July.
Okay, comments from the committee, Deputy Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, some brief comments tonight for our businesses, our emergency service and rec. For business, I was at a meeting with the Division of Tourism and Business Development, so it's been a challenge for businesses, small and large, to hire people, young people coming back from school, what have you. There's more new laws this year than you can imagine. There's laws for 18-year-olds, 14 to 16, tipped employees, 17-year-olds, it's all different, so we're looking out for you. We have contact numbers if you have questions, and they could even help you hire somebody that... Some people, they have some feeder programs, websites, youth.gov. So I encourage people, if somebody wants to call 693-1100, ask for me, I'll get you the number, I'll provide administrative array of the number, and what we'll do is we'll have that there, the number, the name, the contact person, and the website. If the business is needed, I want it to be there for them. As far as tourism, um, what's going to happen is there's going to be a World Cup here, and people say, "Well, it's just going to be New York, it's going to be Philadelphia." So when the Europeans travel, they travel for three weeks to a month at a clip. There's going to be 46 matches over three weeks. It's going to have the estimated impact of 10 Super Bowls. If you have a rental property, you got to get ready, because there's going to be people staying here. It's going to be an impact on our businesses. It's not just going to be New York City and Philadelphia, it's going to be the entire region down to Baltimore. So it could be a benefit, it could be an opportunity for us to participate in that economy that comes basically once in a lifetime when we host. The last time we hosted, I think, was in the early 80s in Los Angeles. The recreation, as liaison here with Committeeman McDonald, I have a small update from Mr. Wieland. Every Friday through September, 11 to 5, we'll have our farmer's market, all kinds of products there, including fresh breads, artisanal cheeses, and soaps, candles, jewelries, crystals, I mean, come and take a look, it's a great farmer's market. I'm... A lot of times I'm at the office, there are occasions when I am able to be there, and
I read that Wall has settled their affordable housing obligation. So the, I get around town a lot, I get a lot of people asking like, when the state asks us to do something, you know, we should say no, or, or, or fight it more. And we generally try and strike the best deal we can at the time. So Wall has been, had a obligation back in 2015 of 1,250 affordable housing units with a, a bonus credit of 313, which brings their total from, to 947. This is, again, from 2015. And they just settled it this week at 947 units. So that's pretty much the same amount of units that they've been fighting for, for 10 years. So that's, you have to imagine that's a lot of attorney's fees and, and planning fees for 10 years. And they ultimately have to do what, what they originally were, were told to do. And we usually take the position to strike the best deal we can at the time in order to, you know, save the taxpayers money.
Right.
In addition, I also hope everybody has a memorable Memorial Day weekend, and please remember the soldiers who are no longer with us and, and gave their lives for us. That's my comments.
Thank you, Mr. Kennas. Mr. McDonald?
Thank you, Mayor. I too want to talk about Memorial Day. We have the parade, which starts at 10 o'clock. Then there's a memorial service right here in the park. Come on by. I know the police, I know in the past years it was loud because they're letting traffic go by. Last few years they've been cutting the traffic off. I want to thank them for that. Wednesday, the mayor and I had the privilege of attending the Ocean County Mayor's breakfast. And in there, they had a gentleman, do you remember his name?
Joe?
Joe.
Joe Cooper.
Joe, thank you, Kevin. We want to talk about, about this. What's happening with our volunteers and firefighters. And I'm not happy about it. The apparatus and the truck spends, the money and that stuff, there's nothing we can do about that. That will be dealt with in the future. However, what they're doing now is putting severe restrictions on these guys. It's just not right. Was it 200, 240 hours to get on a truck, Kevin?
Well, they just had graduation Monday night at Academy, firefighter one, firefighter two, 400.
Okay, 400, 400 hours of training. And you're not getting paid before they can get on a truck. Is that right, Kevin?
Well, if they ask firefighter one to get on a truck, but they're requiring firefighter two, so literally 400.
Yes, think about that. Think about that. Not only that, they're pushing the older guys out because they're putting fitness tests in. And come on, push-ups, carrying a pack of 45 pounds for three miles for under 45 minutes and things like that, we're going to lose them. We're going to lose them. And 400 some odd hours, who's, my, my son, he's 30 years old, has a wife and a baby, a job. I talked to him this morning about it, and he's like, Dad, I couldn't do that. Remember, I gotta get the time to do that. So again, it's being pushed out. Because what's happening is, they want the volunteers to have the same training as the professionals that are getting paid. So guess where we're headed? Without a question. Probably with the next-
You're using to push the volunteers out.
That's right. It's all about money.
It's bottom line.
All about jobs for the union guys. It's, if we had to go to volunteer fire, uh, pay fire, firefighters in this town, we couldn't afford it. We really couldn't afford it. It would be a disaster. So that, that's where we're headed, probably 10, 15 years down the road, maybe faster if the guys get out. But that's where we're headed. I'm not happy about it. I'm not sure what we can do about it, but I want to get involved in that. Thank you. That's all I have, Mayor.
Yes, Deputy Mayor, go right ahead.
Thank you for the added time, Mayor. And I'll just be brief.
No problems.
I did not know what Mr. McDonald was going to talk about tonight, but in lockstep with that, yesterday I was at an event with Commissioner Quinn, and he's been really above board in his efforts in addressing this and the shortage of volunteers. So what he's doing is trying to get with the Ocean County Vocational Technical School, create a type of feeder program. Didn't talk specifically about fire, and it's in its infancy. And I don't even know how much it's been discussed, but it's, to me, on the surface, without researching it, it's a great idea. What it would do is create a feeder program for young people. Once they became of age, they would get a lot of dish training by licensed people in the vocational technical school. They have to be there, they're a captive audience anyway, going to school, learning a trade, how to work with their hands. If that could work, that could really address all the needs in all of our municipalities. So I applaud that board, whole, whole Board of Commissioners and Commissioner Sadegi as well, who's liaison over there for Vocational Tech, for doing that work. So thank you for the extra minute.
No problem, Deputy Mayor. Okay, so I just wanted to tell you that we had 24 fire calls this month between our Forkett River and our Lenoka Harbor Fire Companies. Again, we could not do it without them, and they are volunteers, and everybody needs to remember that at all times. When they've got, they're out there with a bucket, or they're selling a raffle ticket, every one of us should be buying from them and supporting them in any way, shape, or form that we can. I also attended two career days this week at our elementary schools, both Cedar Creek and Forkett River. Absolute fun time for me. These children in third, fourth, and fifth grade asked me phenomenal questions. I was very impressed for them to ask me the goods, the bads of being a mayor and, and just, it was just really, it was really cool to see kids. And they weren't propped. I asked the teachers if they were prompted with these questions, and they said, no, they just allowed them to ask me. So it was really very special. I did enjoy listening to Joe Jubel talk. He's the fire chief, excuse me, chief fire coordinator for the County of Ocean. Very interesting man to talk to. Very nice to give us the information that we need to hear and pay attention to. I also attended an event for the U.S. Coast Guard this past weekend at the Elks, of which they were there to promote safety on the boats. And if you wanted to, they would go on your boat, they offered up services to go on your boat and make sure you have everything that you need on your boat. So it was very interesting to be there with them. I went, I went to a fundraiser for the food bank that was held over at, Deputy Mayor and I both went to Seabreeze and went to this fundraiser. It's amazing how, from all walks of, everybody gets involved, and they, and they had a big golf outing and raised a good amount of money for the food bank. So another great situation. This Monday is the parade at 10 o'clock. It's, it's, it's an important, it's important for people to come out and support it. Sometimes we don't have a whole lot of people out there as we do for the Christmas parade. And I know, I know the kids enjoy the Christmas parade, and I get that, but I, I really think it's, it's important to be out there and support these men and women who did not come home, but came home in their uniforms. And, you know, it's, it's a big thing that we show our, our love and support for them at all times, not just on one day of the year or two days of the year. So that's just my thoughts on, on Monday's parade here in town. Again, 10 o'clock, and then there'll be a memorial service right out front. So I appreciate people coming out. That's all I have. I'll open up the comments from the public. Come on up.
Who else was? Laura Shadwick from Forkett River. I just wanted to reach out to you and find out how the Adopt a Highway program was going. You said you were going to talk to some people.
Adopt a Highway? I didn't speak about the-
About the litter.
About the litter. I didn't do, yeah, no, I didn't-
Similar to an Adopt a Highway.
Right. No, we've, we've reached out to a couple of the Boy Scouts and Girl Scouts. I've talked to a couple of groups like that. We're going to combine it with Earth Day. That's the plan for next year, is to put it on, on that schedule to, so that, for safety reasons, everybody's more aware of it on, on Earth Day. So we thought, instead of trying to make a separate day, we're going to, we're going to put it all together on Earth Day. That's the plan.
Okay, so just one day a year?
Yes. Yeah, I mean, people should be doing it more often than that, but, you know, trying to get everybody to agree on something is another story, so. But I did, you know, reach out to a couple of different-
Okay, good, thank you. I was down at the Bayfront Park Tuesday and saw the mowing that they did on either side of the pathway. And noticed that one of the homes there that has an in-ground pool, I don't know if they did it themselves, or if the DPW did it, if, because the homeowner asked them to while they were there, but they went along the path, they cut up, they did the entire property in front of the person's house that doesn't belong to them, it's public property, and then went back down and continued to mow along the path.
Obviously, I can't answer that right now, but I can check-
Right, I'm just pointing it out, letting you know that-
I can check into it for you. Yep.
I don't know if DPW did it because they were asked to by the homeowner, or if the homeowner did it themselves, but it was not supposed to be done. And then my other question, which hasn't been answered yet regarding the mowing on either side of the path, is how are those plants dangerous? You keep saying that people are going to trip over them and hurt themselves. Meanwhile, you've got a playground full of equipment, and you're concerned about plants that-
Well, I'll address that. May I, ma'am?
I'm not done.
So what?
I'm not done.
Okay.
Because, you know, like I said, when, when you, when all those bushes were cut down along the rock wall, that exposed something quite dangerous for children to play on. And they could see it now that all the, you know, the grasses and the bushes were cut down. So I just don't understand your reasoning, and I'd like to-
Absolutely. We, we as township leaders have to look at public safety. When you talk about that park in particular, we went through great expense in that park. If you walk in that park, it actually has concussion-proof flooring in case a child, you walk on it, you bounce on it.
Right.
Remember my daughters, I mean, it's, so there are safety mechanisms built in. Before we build anything, we talk with our insurers, it's called the JIF, the Joint Insurance Fund. But I will tell you, when you have sidewalks, like in any city, urban, suburban area, if those sidewalks are not, not kept, or if there's a four-inch lip because a root is pushing it up and people, somebody falls, it's going to be the town who gets named on things like that. So when we say we had, just have to cut it back so that there's a clear path, and there's no, whether it's sticker bushes or opportunities to catch a baby carriage wheel, that's all we're talking about. You and I talked that off, off-camera after the meeting last week. I thought it was a good conversation.
I thought it was-
I want to meet, I'm glad, and so we're agreeing.
Well, I heard otherwise, though. I heard that I was disrespectful to you, which I didn't think I was.
Well, I did not say that.
No, not you.
Uh, well, and so, listen, everybody's going to say what they're going to say. I, I made-
There was somebody else up here, but I didn't appreciate that, because I felt like I was being respectful to you.
Well, I told you why initially it was a little bit hard to take. You had a comment last, and that was pretty-
That was a while ago.
Off-color.
And I figured you guys were over it by now, but-
Okay, well, that's why we do what we do. And I, I appreciate that, accepted. But that's why we do what we do. We always are looking for safety. We do not want to get sued. It raises everybody's high watermark. And there's, there's a way we can meet in the middle and have safety, have turtles, have flora, have fauna, and have a recreation place for the town. We do it in all our other parks, they're beautiful. We cut them, we have huge tournaments, children love them. So we, and we go on the advice and consent of Dr. Hale and other people that are, have high academic standard in this field. So we're trying to, we can't, as, as Mayor says all the time, it's a very tough seat she's in. It's, we're trying to be all things to all people. But my first thing, and I could have disagreement on my colleagues, is safety. That's all I have, Mayor.
Okay.
I still don't see it, but-
Okay.
I mean, they're plants. If anything, it would cushion a fall.
Okay.
You know? Now there's nothing, now there's the hard ground. And that path is between six and seven feet wide, so you can definitely fit a baby stroller and someone next to it, and a dog. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Let me get this gentleman over there first, Steve. Sorry, Steve.
Hey, I just wanted to talk about-
If I may just have you say your name?
Brian Fleury, down at Forkett River.
Whoops, I'm sorry, I missed that.
Fleury, F-L-E-U-Y. Okay, I wanted to talk about like the taxes, the school board taxes, and just what I think might be a remedy for that.
Okay, if it, I just would like to say, you're welcome to talk, I'm not going to stop you from talking, but I just want you to know, anything to do with the school board, we don't handle that here.
Oh, no, it's not so much the school board, but it's taxes in, in general.
General? Okay, then go ahead, go ahead and tell me.
Taxes are going to be coming up, okay?
Tell me.
So I think I have a remedy for, to, you know, for the school, for all this short funding that's going on, that if it's not addressed, is going to raise taxes, and I see in the paper 9.9% and stuff like that. I just had my taxes, I moved into town a couple of years ago, just had my taxes go up 50% in town here, so-
50% they went up?
50% they went up. And so, you know, I had low taxes, but it went up 50%. So I could show you, I brought my tax, my tax things with you, if you questioned that. That's what I, that's what I said. All right, so if you hear me out, everything will come together at the end here, but it has to do with the, the monies that are given out throughout the year. So it's, we have Rutgers University, their budget this year was $5.4 million, of which New Jersey pays 21.4%, or $1.156 billion. In addition, New Jersey has given Rutgers $300 million this year in a package for capital improvements, of which $100 million went to upgrading indoor basketball courts and what they call operations. $150 went to medical schools and, that are being built in New Brunswick, and 50 million for what they call a research complex, complex, all of which was reported by Rutgers, all of which is our tax money that's going into there. By the way, it is reported that Rutgers Sports lost over $250 million this year, and they're in debt. Also added to that $300 million package was $25 million in tax credit breaks, which is your money, my money, all of our monies that are going in. The total this year is over $100, $1.5 billion of taxpayer money that the school is getting. And they already have a $2 billion endowment. And if they were to take that $2 billion endowment and at simple interest at 5% this year, you got $100 million. And I'll get back to all that in a little bit.
May I just, may I just ask you for a question? The question would be, what does that have to do with our taxes here? I'm just-
I'm going to get to that at the, so I'll tell you what it is. At the end of this whole thing right here, and when I give you a breakdown, if a state, we have, when you had your taxes go, certain schools got funded, certain schools got zero, and Lacy Township, Toms River, everybody-
In Ocean County.
In Ocean County basically got negative, okay? Negative. What I'm proposing here is to get the people that were negative and just get them funded up to that zero point, not asking for anything more than that, which was over close to $150 million. There was a shortfall. Okay? So what I'm proposing is, you know, that if Rutgers, if I just get through this rest of this part here, and then I'll get to that, okay? Two minutes.
No problem.
Okay, Rutgers has approximately 67,200 students, of which 18% are out of state or what they call international or out of country, which our tax-paying dollars are paying for.
Right.
All these numbers I got off of Rutgers website, so it can be looked up, and I can get you, get you all copies if you, if you'd like. Rutgers employs that 28,000, they employ 28,950 employees, full, full-time and part-time. It's almost a two-to-one ratio. Our schools, as we all know, that they're cutting back teachers and staff and everything, are way, they're around 15-to-1 is the ratio right now. So like Rutgers is, you know, well over that. Okay? Now, the reason for all this is, without the fund, without funding Rutgers, at least $100 million, we could save money from the state and the schools, and if they take that, all those people that were negative, would bring them up to zero. That $100 million that I brought up earlier on that endowment at 5%, you know, which, you know, plus minus, is just money that Rutgers isn't going to make this year. Okay? That money, that money that we're going to, that the state is already saying that they're going to give you some money and everything, it's just Rutgers being a good neighbor. They're take, 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 but they're not give, give, give. And over the course of the last five years, we've given them almost $9 billion in state money and not seen anything back. So for that reason, you know, I'm saying that through you people, through the people that are here in the audience, if you get the word out, and I'm going to try to, get the word out to the other towns, get the people out, you're the elected people, they see that you're going for, you know, like to help that way, and look into it-
Right.
And talk to people from other towns, that this is a way that, without taking any money, taxpayers' money, and just what Rutgers has in their shoebox, more or less-
I wish, I wish it was that easy to do.
I know, you wish it was that easy, but as elected officials and everybody, and everybody, like, you know, the elections are coming up, flu to state and everything else, you know, they can, you know-
No, you're right.
Because we're Ocean County, South Jersey, we know that, you know, the reasoning.
We know the reasoning.
And so get out and vote, and, but that's what I had to say.
What I would do if I was you is go to the Board of Education meeting and bring your plan, you know, your plan with you there and talk to them.
Okay.
All right?
But if the people could spread the word and go from there.
Well, it's on-
Actually, there's one, with that one point-
Yep.
We could alleviate everything, and nobody would have to have their taxes raised.
You should reach out to your governor about that, too.
I'll reach out to your district legislators, you can stop right there on Lacy River.
I went down the other day, I went down the other day, and they were all out, so I asked, I asked about making an appointment.
Yeah.
Yeah, you should.
That's really the, you know-
Thank you for coming down.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Okay.
Also, with the fire department-
Yes.
Can't you, if you contact your insurance companies, can't you have them, like, show them that you need less of a, I'm just saying, you know, like, less time for training, or can you use the training that you're-
State mandated.
Okay?
State mandated, yeah, unfortunately. Mr. Boral? Anybody else? Nope? Okay, Mr. Boral.
Steve Boral, Forkett River. I just want to commend you for the Memorial Day statements that you all made, and it's very important.
That's right.
And I think a lot of our history is evaporating before our eyes, and young people aren't aware of the suffering and everything that happened in past generations.
That's right.
So anyways, I also want to thank the township for providing me quite a few financial documents. And not being a financial expert, but not being the dumbest guy on the block, I concluded that after looking at some of it, that at the end of 2023, on the annual debt statement, it said that we were in debt $24 million, a little bit more than $24 million. And then on March 27, 2024, a supplemental debt statement came out with a net debt that added it to make $27,756,429. However, if you look on Sheet 9A of the cash reconciliation document, on 9A, it lists 16 bank accounts that the township has, and lists banks and amounts supporting cash on deposit. And as of December 31, there was $28 million, a little bit more, in those 16 accounts. And I just wanted to note a connection between the debt and what we got in the 16 bank accounts, and how that reacts to the debt.
Mr. Boral, I'm going to have to allow the township administrator to answer that question for you, okay? If you don't mind.
Well, some of those bank accounts are also escrow accounts, which are developers put money on file for us to do inspections, so there's some of that in there.
So it's not township money?
The escrow accounts are not. What happens-
Is there, do they differentiate in that, which is-
I don't-
I don't think it does.
Yeah, if you break, if the accounts get broken down, yes, you are, but you're not privy to those intimate details of those bank accounts and the bank statements. So for a developer, whether it is Mr. Kennas, or yourself, or myself, and you're doing a project, you have to put inspection fees and escrow accounts on file to pay for the planning board, the zoning board, the inspectors, so many, so forth, the engineers. So a lot of that, a, a portion of that money, not a lot, a portion of that money is escrow accounts. So again, once the project is done, and it's closed out, the engineer signs off, escrow accounts get returned to the developers, okay? Then on top of that is, yes, we borrow money to pay for those capital projects as we go along. Tonight, you saw that we did a tremendous amount of spending based on the capital. So next year, around May, we'll borrow that money, because we'll float it for now, then we borrow that money to, to bond for those items. We do short-term notes, long-term notes. Most of them are short-term, that we try to pay off internally without borrowing the money as time goes on.
Well, I did see in another part of the documents, I think it was the projected interest for 2024 was over $800,000.
Could be, yeah, very well.
Okay.
Which is great interest in compared to years past, believe me. We're lucky if we were getting $80,000 in years past.
Well-
So are you not happy that we're doing that?
Well, I'm happy anything that is a positive for the township and the township taxpayers. I'm just a little, I think that there should be more information given out towards, that's just like with the reading of the minutes tonight. You have a number of vehicles you guys are going to purchase. There's no numbers attached to any of those motions of what you anticipate they're going to cost and what it's going to cost the township taxpayers. I just think that, you know, when it comes to spending, any more than a couple thousand dollars, that should be noted, and there should be more detailed information. Not that I don't think that any of it is not warranted. I think there should be a further accountability with the actual expenditure. Just like it just says vehicles. Now, I'll give you, for an instance-
Well, can I just interrupt you for a second?
Go ahead, go ahead.
Steve, when we do our budget meetings-
It's in the budget document.
It's in all in those documents that you get, if you come to the budget meetings, which we open to the public, two of them-
The public, go ahead, finish.
I know, but, but I'm saying to you, you're saying that we should be more transparent, and I'm saying to you, we are transparent. That information is in all the budget details that are handed out at our budget meetings.
It's in the budget document that he was supplied a copy of.
Yes.
In the capital improvement fund side of it.
So if you see, that's what you just said, now it's in the capital fund.
I, I still believe that, you know, there should be presentations, especially at meetings like this, because they're televised, and a lot of senior citizens can't make it, or people can't make it for whatever reasons. But there should be more financial transparency, just like, you know, say code enforcement. What type of vehicle, what type of vehicle is code enforcement then?
A Ranger.
A pickup truck?
It says a Ford Ranger.
What's that?
The Ford Ranger.
She said that.
Who said that?
Amy did.
Well, it's hard to follow Amy, because she talks very quick, and I didn't catch that.
She was trained, she was trained by Veronica.
Yeah, well, Veronica talks too fast, either.
She's a slow speed.
You know, I did not, I did not hear that, but Ford Ranger, that's better than a Ford F-250 pickup.
She wants to tell you, she wants to tell you.
All of the resolutions that were read tonight have all of the amounts written in them, and they'll be available online tomorrow. You can come in and request a copy of them as well.
Again, I, I don't see the, the need, I think this stuff should be delivered to the township taxpayers at meetings such as these, that we shouldn't have to go and seek documents out and then spend hours trying to figure them out. When, when a person of knowledge, like your chief financial officer, the young lady that was here, that couldn't tell me whether or not the township was in debt, should periodically do a presentation at one of these meetings and say, okay, we have a debt of $28 million. We have property, like the one thing lists property at the bottom, and it actually is over a billion dollars, but it doesn't go into detail what that is. I just think that an opportunity for the township taxpayers to even back you guys more would be financial transparency when you're going out. If you look at the minutes tonight, you're talking about hundreds of thousands, God knows how much money. If you look at the minutes tonight, you're talking about hundreds of thousands, God knows how much money.
Yes, but it was all approved at budget meetings.
Not saying that it's not needed.
No, 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 and I get.
But I shouldn't have to be told, I got to go to a budget meeting, too, when some of this stuff could be relayed to the public. "Oh, we have a financial review going to be done three times a year, four times a year at the township meeting." Everything runs through, everyone votes yes, and we're left in the dark in a way.
Okay, can I just interrupt you again?
Okay.
So if I was to read you every one of those resolutions that we pass along, that you have the opportunity to see the moment we pass it, it's three pages long.
I know.
Of what has to be read.
Right.
So what I'd like to say to you, and whether you care about this part of it or not, is what my point is, is that what we do here is completely different than any other town. I've been to other town meetings, and they do not even, they do not even read resolutions, they just.
Consent.
Well, that's wrong, then the taxpayers should revolt there.
Right, but what I'm trying to say is, is we're giving more out than we.
I don't care.
No, no, I understand.
What's going on in anywhere but Lacey Township.
But I think we're very transparent.
And comparisons, to me, don't mean nothing.
No, but I'm telling you, we're very transparent.
Okay.
Okay?
Well, could you be further transparent and have the chief financial officer just give us an overview of the documents I gave, you know, that I got, because they're, you know.
They're supplied to the governing body, they get copies of those documents, and then the final report is the audit, which we just.
Okay.
You know what, Steve, would you like me to do this?
Go ahead.
I will set up a meeting that you could meet with Linda.
No.
May I?
It's got, I, wait, set up a meeting for what?
For you to sit there and go over the documents with her so that she could explain things to you, if that's what you want to know.
One second. So, so to his point, can we put the resolutions online prior to us vote?
They are.
Prior to us vote, like, to tonight's meeting? Is there a reason why they can't? I'm asking, I don't know.
Well, we have to put them in a different location than where we're currently putting them, but I, because I can't put them under the adopted section prior to the meeting because they're not adopted.
Right, okay.
So we can work something, figure something out.
I mean, it seems like that would solve some of the problems.
Well, the meeting packet that, that we supplied to you in advance of the meeting, we could probably upload underneath on the calendar. Where you have the agenda posted, we'll just upload the document that you're supplying to them. We can do that, and all of that information will be in there.
It's probably a good idea, I think, that's my opinion.
Yeah, yeah.
So you're saying it's going to be online?
Yes.
But again, it'd be prior to being voted on.
Yeah, so, so we, we give, we give the committee members their meeting packets by the close of business on Tuesdays. So, and Tuesday evening before we leave, we can make sure we post it, instead of posting just the agenda, we can post the entire packet.
Steve, this is what I got issued today to read over for each one of those resolutions. I'll gladly put them online beforehand, but they're not cleared at that point because we have not voted on them, just so you know.
I mean, you could even state that a resolution has a potential of, if approved, this resolution has a potential of $80,000.
Well, it says the dollar.
This resolution has a potential of $350,000.
It says the dollar amounts.
Okay, so what we need to do, okay, is again, instead of rushing through voting on them, let Amy finish what she's going to say and go through the resolution to be much more detailed.
Slow down, Amy.
And to say those numbers. And this way, so instead of jumping in and doing motions in seconds, let Amy finish the whole thing so she finds the spot in the resolution where she needs to send, see the numbers.
If we were cutting her off, I apologize. I see the numbers here in her favor.
She has them all written down.
We have all the numbers, and you want the numbers, and that's fair, you're right.
I, you know, I just, you know, I'm just trying to think from a reasonable point of view.
It's fine, Steve, we're going to take care of it.
Okay. What about the officer doing an overview? The chief financial officer, the lady that was here.
I asked you if you'd like to have a meeting with her.
Why do I have to have a meeting with her?
Well, because you're the one asking the questions.
Because I'm the one that's able to go up here. You don't think these questions go through these people's minds?
And our auditor does the overview of our financial sounding, and he supplied the report, which I believe, he got a copy of the audit. And that talks about our financial stability.
I would open up to a meeting, but I wouldn't go there by myself, I would have to have a couple of other people, is that possible?
I'm not going to put her through that either because you weren't nice to her the last time she was here.
Nice to her?
Oh, please. You can watch yourself on the camera again.
Yes.
You know, we've talked about this, Stephen.
But we'll be more than happy to set up a meeting, and the mayor and I will be more than happy to.
Well, you know, it's kind of unbelievable, but that the chief financial officer doesn't know if the township's in debt or not. So, to me, that was a little disrespecting.
She did not, no, she didn't have the documents with her to give you that answer.
Her name's on every document.
Yes, but she didn't want to give you the wrong number at all, so.
All right, so we'll figure that out.
But we'll have the other stuff on before the next meeting.
Okay.
Okay?
And a possible meeting.
Yes. I'll gladly sit in with you, too, if you want.
All right. I'll get back with you on that.
All right, get back to me.
You know, it was brought up to me about Lacey Township, and, you know, like I said, I lived here a long time, and I've seen a lot of things come and go, a lot of good things go away, a lot of bad things come, and all under the, I guess, the foundation of creating more money for the township, which really does seem like we need. And before I get into what I want to say, I just want to ask, the taxes are going up 9.3%?
No, it's not 9.3%. Steve, why don't I let you explain how that happens?
Well, it's the school's taxes.
Right, the school taxes. Without counting the regular taxes.
I don't know if, again, this is not the meeting for this, the school, I don't know if the school has finalized their budget. Let me finish. The, they can go up to 9.9%, we'll see if they do.
So, you'd allow the league to just do it?
On the school budget, not our budget, not the county budget, not the library budget.
So.
Let me just interject you, it was a special bill that was passed by the Assembly and the Senate, and the governor signed off on. The schools that lost money, as we did and the other schools did, they had the right to go up to 9.9% tax increase.
And I'm going to repeat myself as the mayor that we should not be talking about this.
You're right.
Okay.
Nothing to do with us right here.
Well, I'm just trying to brace myself when this comes, and.
I agree.
The new fiscal year for taxes is August?
Yes.
Okay, so theoretically.
No, no, no.
November?
No. The, our, our township budget runs from January to December. Schools runs from July to June.
No, he was asking.
And the first quarter payment is on August.
Yeah, but that's tax, that's for tax billing.
That's what he was asking.
What our budget.
That's what he was asking.
The new tax bills come out.
In August, yes.
So that's when we could may, I don't want to say it, school budget could be on that one.
It will be.
It will be.
The school budget will be on that one, that's what I'm waiting for. I'm waiting for them to finalize their budget so we can actually print you regular bills versus estimated bills once we have the true number.
Okay. So, is it going to be 9.9, or you don't, we don't know?
The school has not given us information yet, yes. They have to have a decision before their June 5th or 6th meeting.
I don't want to be rude, but you've overgrown your five minutes. Is there?
I'm the only one that gets hit with that.
I don't.
All right, I had more stuff I wanted to say.
Let me just see, no, no, let me see if there's anybody else that wants to speak.
What's that?
If there's somebody else that wants to speak, and then I'll have you back up.
I don't know if I have the time for all that.
Come on up, please.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Apologies, I thought your meeting started at 7:00, so I'm a little, little late. Donna Brophy, Forkett River, I don't have to give address, correct?
No.
Okay. I'm coming here on behalf of the residents on, on my street, if I don't have to give it. It's Beach Boulevard, and calling, talking about the Bayfront Park and the, the grass situation.
Okay, so here's, here's the thing. Donna is the first name?
Mm-hmm.
We have had discussion that you haven't been here for to prove before, or unless you're watching on TV, that we're trying to set up a meeting.
And that's what Chris and Sandra Arnold, I think Sandra's been in contact with you.
Right, so we're waiting on that, we have not gotten dates from them yet, we're trying to get a whole lot of, you know, everybody here.
I understand that.
So we can have a proper meeting without.
I understand that, but I would like to also give a few points regarding the, the park, if I could.
Well, you surely can.
Thank you. As was said in last year's meeting, it, all the parks in the township are jewels, right? And they are maintained. This is a unique park, it's a unique spot because it's on the bay. People come to enjoy the water, to enjoy the boats, just as I do, living there as a resident. I live in my house full-time, 24/7, and I enjoy it immensely. I'm so disappointed, though, by how it's looking right now, and I'd like to share some of those, some of those spots with you. And also just to say, when we last left the meeting, I understand there's a meeting still to be handled and, and on the books, but we were told it would be in January. So we're already now to mid-May.
You're correct.
And, and nothing has been mowed, and we were told, you know, it was going to be mowed, nothing's been mowed. Now we're hitting our turtle season from June through October where it's not going to be mowed again, right?
It was just mowed the other day, though.
No.
Not the whole thing, only the walkways.
Along with that, not the full length of the walkway, because the residents at the end who didn't want their lawn mowed, their, their, their walkway is still pristine and how they want it. How is that safety if they're not being mowed? It was mowed all the way up to their property, and then around their property, it's not mowed. That's still a safety hazard. Also, in the beginning, when you come into your, the park entrance, that lot, the land on either side of that sidewalk has not been mowed. I walked it this afternoon, and it's not been mowed. So if your concern is safety, you're not being consistent.
I don't have any concern about safety.
That wasn't, no, that was brought up, but.
Well, it might have been brought up by somebody else, but I'm saying, I, that wasn't.
May I, please, just as a resident, you should be aware of safety for people walking that, that land, that sidewalk, and it's not being mowed. We have concerns because we wanted it to be mowed and maintained, but yet we have to listen to what you're doing and say, okay, there's a meeting coming. But the residents at the end, they get what they want, and they're still on the township property with that sidewalk, and that's not been mowed, so.
I thought from the last time.
Yes.
That we agreed that the people that did not want it mowed were going to put signs up.
But if you're talking about moving the, the, cutting the land, what, two feet on either side of the sidewalk, why do you stop it right there?
I haven't seen it, so I can't.
There's only two or three neighbors that did not.
Yeah, right.
But they're all at the end.
All the way at the end.
Yeah, they were all at the end.
Everybody else wanted it maintained.
Right.
Also, the easement, I have an easement to the left of my property line.
Yes, you do.
And that is mowed, but my question is this, it's mowed to a certain point, and then it's not mowed from that point to the sidewalk. So what's the point of an easement if the residents have to walk through weeds to get from the end of that easement to the sidewalk? It makes no sense to me. Also, there's a bench on the walkway, there are weeds growing through the, the bench, the diamonds that are built in. Weeds, weeds are growing through, you can't sit there. It looks, it looks so unkempt and so horrible, and you can't sit there because the weeds are growing through the bench. The property to my left is an open field right next to the park, not mowed. I've seen, I've lived here, it'll be four years in August, I've seen residents enjoy that land for picnics, throwing balls with their kids, kites, having kite, you know, kites in the sky and all of that, throwing baseballs. That property is unusable at this point because of the weeds. The weeds are so high that no one's going to sit there and have a picnic, no one's going to sit there and fly a kite, no one's going to sit there and throw a ball because of the weeds, and that hasn't been, that hasn't been mowed. So the whole idea of a park being family-friendly.
Right.
That portion of land.
I agree with you.
Is unusable, and it looks horrible. Let me see, there was a few other things I wanted to mention. Oh, the turtle, the turtle holes, it may not be a priority to some of us, but that's all covered. So if there are turtles, because our season starts Jan, in June, the turtles will not be able to get through those turtle tunnels because now they're all covered in weeds. So I don't understand, I mean, someone said to me, why are you even going to the meeting? Because nothing's going to get done, and I'm representing my neighbors who are like, we're not going, we're not going. And I'm going to be the, the voice of the neighbors on the field, on that road who want it. And I feel like sometimes, why do I even take the time to come when it's just going to fall on deaf ears? Because certain people apparently have certain things that it seems they, you listen to them more, perhaps, my, my opinion. I don't feel like.
Everybody's entitled to an opinion, though, you know, every.
May I, please just finish, I, I'm just sharing with you.
I'm allowing you to finish, I haven't stopped you from finishing, I was just saying to you.
All right, I just wanted to share my feelings.
Yes, that you're entitled to your feelings, I don't have a problem.
But I don't feel like my feelings are even being considered because you're catering to a few people.
You're, you're saying I'm catering to a few people.
Who want butterflies and birds, and this is not dedicated space for a nature preserve. This is open space, it should be usable and friendly for those who want to use it.
So then I had neighbors calling and complaining that when we cut the grass so low, the geese are invading that property now, too. So there is no winning.
But there's geese still coming with long grass.
Yes, but there's no winning here.
The other thing is, my property line abuts the township property where there's long grass.
Mm-hmm.
I see people walk their dogs, I haven't seen it happen, but I've been seeing dog feces in the long grass because no one sees it, and it's unkempt. And I've picked up two to three times within the past week because no one sees it, and they're just allowing their dogs. There's trash, there's ticks. It's just, this is not an idea of a jewel in a township, and it's really not anything that I feel I would be proud of right now, living next to it. I just wanted to share my feelings, thank you very much.
Thank you. And I agree with you.
Peter, please.
Why, I'm allowed to say it.
I know, but you just.
We should be cutting it.
Good evening, Mayor, Township Committee members.
It's a discussion that we have to have privately, it shouldn't be in-and-out calls here, okay? This is not, you know, one way or the other, this is something that has to be paid to our attention, so. Go ahead, Mr. Bidnick.
Good evening. First of all, I can't believe that we're still talking about the mowing. I mean, do you realize that you people look totally inept? And the reason why I say this is, I came to meetings last year, we're talking about the same thing. Just make a decision already, one way or the other. You're not going to be able to please everybody, you know that. So instead of this going on, meeting after meeting, I come here for how many months, and I listen to the same things? You look ridiculous. Do your job, make a decision, okay? That's the first thing. Second, what Steve said tonight about the resolutions, I agree with him 100%. The figures, that you should have the figures out there for anything that deals with money. We're going to buy, we're going to buy four, you know, new police cars, it's 400,000 or 300,000, the public should know this. And the other thing that he brought up that I totally agree with, you need to have the CFO come here once a year and do a presentation, just like our school district does. I've gone to so many meetings there, they're very informative, and these are televised. So the people who are at home can have a better picture of exactly where and how our money is being spent, because it is our money, right? Correct?
You know everything, so I'm leaving.
I know, exactly. So the next thing is, the property where Community Hall is, it would be nice in the resolution if you had, you know, if you had said that this is the property that's Community Hall, so people know. That's the reason why the last time, when this was happening, we didn't know that that property was being sold, and, you know, just run through with a block and such number. It would be better if you had said that this is the property, block and lock, and it's known as Community Hall, blah, 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 so the people are more aware. Okay, I want the public to know that there was one bid. The bidder was the same person, Mr. Michael DeGeorge, the same person who came to this meeting crying to this township committee about, oh, how he was going to be losing out hundreds of thousands of dollars, and that he was just some small-time little realtor, which he's not. I did my research on this, and he's not some small-time realtor, and I just, it just seemed like a whole sham. But on top of that, his ex-wife happens to be, happened to have worked for the Green Title Company. How convenient. Well, no, because we called the title company when we were doing our research, and we spoke to them. And when we said, we gave them more documents that they didn't have, they said, well, we're not going to do anything about this because the township committee said it was, okay, we're just going to put it through. Well, I had news for them, a lot of government bodies do things that aren't necessarily above board. So I just want you to know this, and the other thing I want to go on the record for, is I want to know what we're paying for legal services. Like, how could this have happened, that that resolution was not clear-checked by our attorneys before that sale was approved and gone through?
Well, the resolution wasn't the issue, unfortunately, the issue was the failure to properly notice in the newspaper, so that has nothing to do with it.
Well, no, but the government body never did the resolution to authorize the sale for $1.5 million. That was not done.
That, that, you, you are correct.
Correct.
That is correct.
And that is the issue. How did that happen, that the law firm that we're paying mega bucks to didn't over, didn't have that information and realized, well, we're missing this before this sale was even approved the first time, so it didn't have to become the fiasco that it was? I, as a taxpayer, would like an answer to that question, because we're paying for these legal fees. And they, we pay people because we're all human and we make errors. I would use a lawyer if I'm doing something with a contract because I want to make sure that what I'm doing is correct. So we spend money for lawyers, but if we're spending money for lawyers and they're not catching these things, and then we get ourselves in a fiasco like we did, which was very embarrassing to the township committee, bad publicity, I mean, that you, people don't seem to be knowing what you're doing. And, you know, it's just really, really bad. And quite frankly, it does appear, as the woman had said in this meeting, that you don't care what the people of this town think. I mean, I know you don't care because you went and continued to sell the property on Community Hall, and there's been a big protest about it. I, I want to ask you, Madam Mayor, when you go to organizations outside of our town, and you're representing Lacey Township, what do you say to people that, to promote our community?
I say how wonderful, beautiful town that we have, and how lucky we are to have this beautiful town that we have.
Okay, all right, so let's say that, okay? So do you tell them that we have two lakes that are polluted, okay, that we can't swim in?
We have no lakes that are polluted, so don't give out misinformation.
Okay, then why is the Deerhead Lake closed?
It's not, it's not a bathing beach location.
Well, it used to be.
We have three.
Well, it used to be, because.
We moved it.
Oh, you moved it?
We have a whippet in the lake now that never fails.
Oh, okay.
It's true.
All right, so we have a nuclear power plant that's in decommission with a whole bunch of spent rods on it, which is not a plus for our community, right?
I just want to ask you something, is that our fault, too?
Well, you basically, at one point, the government body approved that nuclear power plant coming here, right?
And how long ago was that?
I don't care.
Based on the, excuse me, based on the NRC, federal government assuring us that they would move the spent fuel out of that location to another location.
Yeah, but it's not happening.
So it's a federal, but it was a federal government's failure, not ours.
Yes, I get it, I get it.
I think it's a plus, anyway.
Yeah, so do I.
Yes, of course.
What would you do if we didn't have that $11.1 million coming from ETR?
It's going to get read.
My point, my question isn't that we had the nuclear power plant being a problem. The problem is the leftover, that's the problem, okay?
We'll agree with you that it's not being moved out of there fast enough.
It's, it's really kind of like an issue. We used, we used to have a pheasant hunting place here, which no longer exists, which used to be a draw to our community. We have more overdevelopment to our community now, we have more traffic on our road. Um, we have more overdevelopment to our community now, we have more traffic on our roads. I mean, these are the things that I see because I've been here 19 years. I came here 19 years ago, built my home because it was a safe community, it wasn't overdeveloped. Um, now we have a whole bunch of box stores that weren't here, which aren't like Nordstrom's or Macy's, they're Walmart and Home Depot. I'm sorry, when we promote the town, I want to hear things that are amazing. What makes Lacey so amazing that a film company would want to come here and do things? What are you guys doing? Because that is your job, basically, to be making the town a better place, and to be promoting it, not overdeveloping it in a way where we're gonna have more and more traffic, and we're still gonna have taxes going up. I mean, it's just, you know, this is really an issue, and, um, you do need to be a lot more transparent. And that goes for everything that you do. You are accountable to us, the people. We pay you a salary to do your job. I mean, I have a good relationship with Veronica, she answers my questions, I don't have a problem. But I don't know if that's the case for a lot of other people, and they don't necessarily feel comfortable. And, um, so I'm asking you, again, the best way to move forward where you'll have a lot less questions is to be as transparent as possible. You voted on a piece of resolution at the last meeting that I spoke out against, which basically was to change a large part of the thing that gives the public the ability to be a window on what you people are doing, behind closed doors and signing contracts and such, which I took personal offense to because we've used that. My group has used that to get information. We used it for the Johnson Controls Contract. I mean, if these things are changed, it won't give the people the viewpoint, and we need to keep a check on our government. Because we all know what happens when governments are not checked on. We've seen this happen over and over and over again. And as far as the one comment that the one individual made here about the schools, I don't want to talk about this, but he, he brought up a question about why the funding is the way it is. Well, I'll explain this to the public in this town. The S2 that was passed was Senator Sweeney's idea. It was basically, his whole thing was to consolidate school districts, and that's exactly, in my view, what is happening right now. He's forcing school districts to have to consolidate, and you know what? That would be a great thing for all of us because the kids would actually get a much better education.
I appreciate all your comments, Mr. Bidnick, but I'm gonna, I'm gonna repeat myself. When it comes to the school stuff, it really needs to stay at the point of education.
I know, but I, he brought up questions here tonight, and I don't think the public knows, you know, how this all happened.
Right.
So I'm trying to explain it. Anyway, I appreciate you giving me the time, as always. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public?
Uh-oh. Here comes Kevin. Here comes Kevin.
He's one of our firemen from Forked River here.
Yes, he is.
Yes. How many push-ups can you do? That's why I'm up here. I hope all five of the committee members are going to go on the comment portion of the OSHA stuff and everything, and voice your opinions on how that is gonna impact the taxes here in town. Because they need to hear from you, the committee people that run the town, and how it's gonna literally, you know, put the major burden on us. Yeah, you're looking at a couple million dollars, just to, yeah.
Easy.
Well, we're doing it now, you know, you give us the equipment and we do the job for free, so, you know, that's, that's all. Go to bat for us, 'cause I'm not going down without a fight.
Is there an actual site, um, do, do we have a-
Uh, there's public comments on the proposed legislation, I, I, I'll, Patrick can probably find the link for us.
I'll get it.
And then post it on the website, so other people in town can also get a comment on it.
You're right, Kevin, I'll, I'll get on that.
Yeah, 'cause this way, more people know about it, you know, they need to hear that-
They just did the same thing with the changes that they were making to, um, summer camp programs and everything, and it was going to basically cost us hundreds of thousands of more dollars a year to run the summer youth camps, um, for the children, because they were gonna take out the word "private," so then it opened it up to everybody, so you would have to have certain levels of, um, employees, you know, adult, so many adults, and then, you know, your youths that we hire, the 16, 17, 18, you know, the college and high school kids, would, they have to have a ratio of adults, uh, there, so that was gonna run its costs, and they just suspended that and left the current language in there for this year. I don't know if that's gonna change in the future, but this is what happens, if they don't get enough comments to change these things-
They're, they're just gonna go with it.
They're just gonna, yeah, again, just adopt the legislation.
Well, I hope, I, I hope that each town was represented at the mayor's meeting.
It's no different than the affordable housing, accessory dwelling units, all of that.
Good, because a lot of, lot of, lot of, they don't know what's going on.
There were a lot of fire, a lot of fire chiefs were there.
Yeah, it was, it was good that, um, Mr. Jubert came to that meeting, and I'm glad that we were able to coordinate that.
Thank you, too, for getting him invited.
No problem.
And, uh, Pete, it was 1994, the last time the, uh, Men's World Cup was held in the United States.
Did you play in it?
No, I didn't, I was there, no, I'm still playing.
Okay, that's great.
And, uh, the other, that was, the sad part is, the US national team, most of their games this year are all over on the West Coast, so we don't get to see them here on the East Coast. But the good thing is, the finals is in MetLife. So there's 80,000 people gonna be sitting in that stadium. Plus, everybody else is gonna be watching.
Yep. Thanks, Kevin.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Linda Miller, Forked River.
Okay, um, the lake was mentioned, Deerhead Lake.
Yes.
Um, I drive by there, you know, that's my main road to go out into Lacey Road. Uh, I noticed tonight, you know, we had all that rain today.
Yes.
Um, and after the rain, uh, my swimming pool had lots of stuff in it. Well, that lake has more stuff in it today than I've ever seen before.
True.
And it's not from trees right around there, it's from the water being drained into that lake from our streets. So-
Okay.
That happened quite a while ago, when those drainage areas would put in, so that the water from the streets would run into the lake. And I like how you say, well, we moved the lake. You know, you move, you moved the bathing lake. Well, I don't know, it's interesting, um, probably maybe not everybody here was involved in that, but it's interesting how so much money was spent for that parking lot, because it was a very busy lake with people bathing there.
So what's happened with that lake, unfortunately, is with the dam.
I know, the state put that crazy thing in there, now the water doesn't run.
Right. So- And we are looking to change that, but there are other priorities that come up, you know, paving roads, buying equipment and so on and so forth. I have reached out, um, the county is looking for some clean water projects, so I've listed about six or seven different clean water projects, I did include Deerhead Lake. I don't know if the county will give us the money, but I'm trying.
Right.
Okay, well, I thank you for that, but it's a sad thing to ride by every day and then find-
It is.
The geese aren't even there now. They're like, yikes.
They are having, um, but the Lenoka Harbor EMS is having a fundraiser there at that lake. They're having a bonfire for the children and to do smores and stuff, I believe, June 8th, if I'm not mistaken? Yes, it is. Yes.
Anyone else, would you like to, sir, did you want to speak?
Okay.
My name is Annie Yellow Piro, I live in Forked River. I'm wondering if, um, I could get a copy of the conditions for the closing on the warden property?
As in a copy of the contract?
I don't necessarily- Are there conditions to accomplish a closing?
Do, do you mean like what, what, conditions, meaning what they have to do or not do, kind of thing?
Correct, whatever, whatever you want to call it, yes.
I don't-
I don't know if we have, I mean, there's no, I don't think there's any conditions, there's no conditions. You would ask for the contract, and the details would be in the contract, like, within how many days you have to close?
Let me ask a couple of quick questions.
Sure.
We have agreed to sell the property.
Yes.
Has Title passed?
Yes.
Yes.
Title has passed.
Well, not, not to the new owner, no. What we did, we did it before we listed for sale, we did, um, a title search and, and a title policy to, you know, to track everything down. It's up to the buyer if he chooses to do his title search, which I'm surely hoping he will do that.
I'm not worried about the condition of the title. The title remains in the township.
Correct, it's, it still is.
Okay, and you have placed no conditions on this sale in order to go to a closing? If he said tomorrow I want to close, you close.
Yeah, we could close tomorrow if we close, if the documents are all drawn up and he signs the contract, yes. Can, you know, yes.
Yeah, the standard-
There's no contingencies on our part for that property, you know?
And none on his part, either?
No, well, no, he, uh, one of the reasons why it didn't close, um, prior at the first sale was because he wanted the right to be able to come before the board and get his approvals. One, he wanted to do his due diligence, environmental study, title study, you know, all of those kinds of things. Try, try to find a, a tenant, I'm gonna say, a tenant for the property, and then develop all the plans and go before the board.
Okay, so, that's my point.
Well, that's not in writing anywhere.
Okay, but, so, I mean, what kind of a sale, if he doesn't know what he can do with this property-
He does know what he can do with this property, it's called zoning laws.
No, 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 not what is permitted.
Okay.
What is feasible, given the condition of the property, the traffic situation, where it's located?
That's for him to do his due diligence to determine that.
Okay, so-
Which we had given him in the first contract, was it-
How long? Is there a time?
There was a timeframe in the first contract for him to do his due diligence.
What is the time?
At the top of my head, I don't know.
Yeah.
Okay, so would the clerk know?
But there's a period, you, if, the clerk would-
No?
If you get a copy of the contract, it is, is written inside the contract, in every standard purchase, there's always a contingency or period of time where you can do a due diligence. If you want to go and buy a house, you have what's called an inspection period.
Right.
He has the exact same, um, procedure, he has the exact same rights. It's a standard sale.
I'll take a chance. Is it possible I could get from the clerk a copy of the contract?
Well, from the attorney.
Send me, I'm gonna email, I'm gonna give you my card.
Can you send it to her? It's ea-, it's so easy for me to go to her office, okay? If you just transmit, I don't care whether you email it, okay? I can't take an email, my computer's not working. I need whatever it is, four or five sheets of paper.
He'll send it to her and she'll print it out for you, okay?
Okay, so-
As long as that's legal.
A week?
Yeah, okay.
One week?
Send it, it's open allows-
Seven business days.
Seven business days, so if you send, if you, I'm not gonna be here tomorrow, I'm leaving to go away, but I'll get it to them on Monday at the absolute latest, so at some point-
Figure a week, Tuesday or Wednesday.
Tuesday, Wednesday, next week.
Okay, very good, okay.
You're gonna get it, so it's probably on Tuesday, 'cause Monday you're probably closed.
Yes.
Right, I'm, I'm sure Monday you're closed.
Yes.
So I'd like to chat one second about something I heard from another speaker, about automobiles or vehicles that the township's buying. I'm assuming it's because the ones we have are becoming either highly mileage-wise or too much to maintain.